Good evening, elected walk-in to the city council meeting of February 17, 2015. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon the clerk to read the roll.
Councilmember Altough?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Here. Thank you.
Motion for an excused absence.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
We have approval of minutes of previous meetings, and there are several there. We did have a closed session on January 20th also. So we'll take those one at a time. The regular meeting, January 20th, 2015, those minutes are in the packet. Any corrections there?
I move that we approve the January 20th regular meeting minutes as presented to us.
I will say that.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 20th. And a roll call.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.
And then we had a closed session on January 20th also that was circulated.
I move that we approve the closed session minutes of 12, or excuse me, January 20th.
I will say.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the closed session, January 20th, 2015. Roll call.
Councilmember Altough?
No.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.
Then we had a work session on January 26th.
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 26th work session.
And I'll second.
And moved and seconded to approve the work session, January 26th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
And let's see, then we had a proceedings of the February 2nd meeting.
I move that we approve those minutes as presented.
I will say.
And moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February 2nd, those proceedings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
No.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Okay, I think that takes four minutes. Moving on to accounts payable, those are in our packet of whatever due. Any additional corrections to those?
I have one question. Medco Tree Service at Lowell's account, or Lowell's? Just what was that for?
I'm going to be guessing, I can get back to you, but my guess is that there were some issues with trees or other things that you might know as well, but there were a couple of trees that were in the city ready way that needed to be taken down. I think those are trees that are behind Lowell's, like north of Lowell's, but I can get back to you for sure.
Okay. It's just because of the little thing that happened with that, there was some people just had some questions.
Yeah. We had some trees we need to take down too.
Just that there's a lot of them because we didn't get to prove them last time, so I move that we approve these accounts payable as presented.
I will say.
And moved and seconded to adopt the accounts payable. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.
Item four or five, citizen comments for items that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do so.
Tony Ellison, Lowell's Avenue Division, Lowell. Just a few comments on some of the last meetings. First, the liquor license. Greg Canfield does a great job of fixing up Lowell buildings and bringing new businesses and jobs to the city, and I have no doubt that he's going to do the same with the Main Street barbecue. The chief of police was in favor of issuing the license, and the manager of the barbecue was there to answer any and all questions concerning it, and in fact gave a short summary of what, how, and why they were asking for it. Yet two city council members voted against it. One council member didn't even bother to ask a question, just simply believed no. The other member asked for more time to study it. Really? The manager just gave a summary of everything you could want to know about the process, and your answer is no. What does it take to go yes vote? What do these two members have against bringing a new business and related jobs to town? And I would also add, the building already had a liquor permit. Next is Councilmember Altough's quote, "I've been lied to by Mark Howell and just about everybody when it comes to union negotiations." If just about everyone is lying to you, then who's telling you the truth? Maybe you just don't like what you're hearing. That doesn't make it a lie. You produce no evidence. If everyone's lying, you should have plenty of it. Where is it? Next is the work session. For three of the members, this was a waste of time and money. They've been conducting themselves courteously and professionally. Councilmember Altough was indifferent and unapologetic for his behavior, and as the lawyer pointed out, calling people liars and then asking them to do things for you isn't going to work very well. And a quick, under-your-breath sorry really has no meaning. Next, the last city council meeting. This meeting started with two council members trying to add items to the agenda at the last minute, and it didn't pass. When it was moved to approve the agenda, these same two council members voted not to approve, and succeeded in blocking the city from conducting its business. I'm reminded of little kid who doesn't get his piece of candy and then throws a tent per tantrum. This isn't the behavior of council members who have the best interest of Lowell at heart. It's the behavior of people who have a personal vendetta against the city manager and couldn't care less about Lowell. As Councilmember Altough was leaving, I overheard him say to my wife, "See what you get." I then watched these two council members go into the hallway and confer with Ralph Bracken, who doesn't even live in the city of Lowell. They were clearly very happy with themselves. To me, it's obvious who these two members represent. Last is Mark Howell. I personally think he's doing a great job. The Riverwalk, the streets, sidewalks, and the bond rating have all been upgraded or improved, and I'm sure there's much more. Through all the personal attacks by two council members, Ralph Bracken and the Voice Group, he's been calm, well-spoken, and reasonable. He's trying to take the high road. When he aired in his negotiations, he stood up like an adult, took the blame for it, saying it was his fault and gave his apology. A real apology, not a quick, under-your-breath sorry. Will this satisfy these two council members? I'll quote Councilmember Altough, "The only people in Lowell can stop me from going to a negotiation meeting. There have been a lot of deception put on the city council, evil and spiteful things. I've seen that man in action." That quote is why you shouldn't be at negotiation meetings. Your hostility towards Mr. Howell excludes you from any sort of rational examination of his performance, or even your willingness to conduct city business. In my opinion, neither of these two council members have the city's interests at heart. The only thing they're concerned with is going after Mr. Howell and the city damned. I can only hope that at the next election, people will remember who's trying to move this city forward, and who doesn't care at all what happens to this city. Thank you.
Name, sir?
My name is Ralph Bracken.
Thank you.
I am a worker of the city of Lowell, Department of Public Works. I am a member of Voice. As a member of Voice, I have been eluded the privilege of speaking for them, so I'd like to take potentially 10 minutes or less to address the council and the citizens of city law. I'm a little discouraged right at the moment, and this wasn't part of what I was going to say, but that my name was just brought in the conversation. And I would like to correct a statement. I believe Mr. Altough said that the only people that can stop him from attending a council or a contract negotiation, union negotiation, are the citizens of the city of Lowell. And I believe he was referring to the fact that the citizens elected him to be one of their representatives in city affairs and matters. That's his job, along with the rest of the five council members. They're here to serve, they're constituents, the city. They're here to know and understand the affairs of this city and what it entails. If they're not happy with what another official is giving them, or they want to have the evidence firsthand, they have the right to go and get that information to verify. That's what the citizens have asked them to do. I'm also a little set that I, as a person, not as a citizen of the city, shouldn't be concerned of affairs that go on within the city. I have every reason to be concerned of what goes on in the city. These citizens employ me. I'm here to serve them. I am very concerned what goes on in the city because I think it's outrageous if something bad occurs and I, as a worker, do not even bring it to light, turn a blind eye. I would hate to think that the fact that there are individuals, or would be individuals, in the township that I live would do the same thing. I would hope that they would speak up on my behalf. So with that being said, good evening. I'm here again to address the council about personal contracts in regards to the Merck decision, but before I do, I would like to go back in time. About a year and a half ago, most of us were right here talking about the decision and recommended order handed down by Administrative Law Judge Doyle O'Connor. Mr. Howell commented to the newspaper that he was anxious to appeal the decision because he thought that the judge was biased, opinionated, and incorrect. Now fast forward to today. Over $136,000 in taxpayers' money has been spent fighting just seven workers. And, not one, but two decisions from four Merck administrative law judges have been given. Three of these judges reviewed and agreed with Judge Doyle O'Connor's ruling that nothing of Mr. Howell's argument was correct except for one technicality. I repeat, nothing of Mr. Howell's argument was correct except for one thing. The Merck judge did not have the jurisdiction to enforce a personal contract. That's right. The judge simply could not force Mr. Howell to file a personal contract. Now, that is one of the reasons I am here speaking to you and the citizens of Lowell. Recently, I brought this matter to your attention, and I ask you, the council, to advise Mr. Howell to abide by the agreed-upon contracts. I have emailed Mr. Howell for well over a month, asking for his compliance with no avail. You, the council, are probably aware of these emails because I've included you in most of them. So before I go any further, I would like to read some of Judge Doyle O'Connor's ruling and parts from the most recent ruling by Merck on this matter. I would like to also remind you that these rulings depict facts, sworn testimony, and material entered into evidence during the trials, not just simple opinions about what might or might not happen. This is from Judge Doyle O'Connor's ruling, and this is Judge Doyle O'Connor. "In a pre-trial letter, June 18th of 2013, I brought to the attention of the employer that withholding of promised pay increase, if done in response to employees choosing union representation, would likely be a violation of the Pura Act." Later, he says, "How met with Phillips and union steward Ralph Bracken, myself, on February 19, 2013 regarding the withheld $1 an hour per pay increase. At that meeting, How did not dispute that the city policy required paying the increase to Phillips. Rather, he insisted that because the employees had joined a union and were now in bargaining that the city was prohibited by law from giving the increase to Phillips. Bracken also asked to speak with the city council about the issue and was told that the law prohibited Bracken from addressing the council." How's own email of February 20th, 2013 confirms Bracken's version of the meeting. In his testimony, How omitted refusing to pay Phillips the dollar-per-hour scheduled increase because the parties were in bargaining. This is sworn testimony going on. "By the conclusion of the hearing, I caution the employers' council that there appear to be no material dispute over the promise and withholding of the $1 per hour increase withheld from Phillips. No dispute. I similarly caution the parties that there appear to be no legal input which would have precluded the city Lowell giving the unions express concurrence for providing the $1,000 bonus which was withheld from the IVEW union members. But had otherwise been given out of uniformment..." Later in his decision, under the title "The Denial of $1 an Hour Increase and $1,000 Bonus", he goes on to say, "Judge Doyle O'Connor, there is no factual dispute regarding the $1 an hour per hour pay increase or the $1,000 bonus. Todd Phillips was scheduled to receive the $1 an hour pay increase immediately upon receiving his state F-4 water license. He received the license, yet he was denied the pay increase. It is undisputed and in fact admitted that if Todd Phillips and his coworkers had not joined the IVEW, Phillips would have received the dollar-an-hour increase." Now from the most current ruling, the three judge panel from Merck stated, "How also testified that the leisure-related pay raises were pursuant to individual contracts." This is what he testified, they were individual contracts between each employee. And I know this because on the stand, I was asked if that was a contract, and I, under sworn testimony, gave that, that they asked me. "And the city and the city had no policy mandating such raises. These documents introduced at the hearing entitled 'Water Department Pay Raises Based on Licenses Acquired' stated that employees that obtain any license listed below shall be compensated by an hourly increase in pay for the amount listed below with appropriate license acquired." This is entered into evidence. "Each document is signed by the former city manager, the employee supervisor, and the employee. One is signed by Bracken, one Phillips, and one than the other. A performance raise review for Todd Phillips dated February 7th recommends that Phillips receive the F-4 license raised as clearly stated in current policy. Bracken testified that sometime like 2008, Director of Department of Works Daniel Deschardens held a meeting with all employees at the DPW. At that meeting, according to Bracken, Deschardens stated that from now this point forward, city policy would be that any employee who receives or who achieves state license will receive a pay increase based upon the license obtained." They further go on to say, "City manager How testified that leisure-based raises were governed by contracts between the city and individual employees," just as I'm stating here tonight.
Mr. Bracken, your 10 minutes, would you wrap it up?
Okay. As noted, okay. He finally said, "Having contracted with each individual employee, response may have a leak. Respondent, which is the city, may well have a legal duty to grant the pay raises. The contracts state upon each level," and so on and so forth. "Respondent freely and voluntarily entered into these contracts. How, the respondent, is correct that we lack the authority to force him to pay the union members." In conclusion, 30 more seconds, please. My point is simple. Mr. Howell is refusing to pay the increases to three of the workers who obtain these licenses simply because we exercise our constitutional rights. That's it. The judges were very clear what the law says about the matter. Even if Mr. Howell makes a claim that ratifying of the collective bargaining contract tonight would nullify these contracts, he would be wrong. Part of our agreed-upon pay in this collective bargaining contract to you tonight includes these pay increases. So simply put, please, I am begging you to instruct your city manager to abide by the law and the pay increases.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to address the council on items that do not appear on the agenda?
Rachel Phillips, Virginia Township, wife of Todd Phillips. Councilmembers and citizens of Lowell, I am here tonight to quote the findings of the Honorable Administrative Law Judge Doyle O'Connor from the August 13, 2013 fact-finding hearing which was concurred by Michigan Employee Relations Commission on January 28, 2015. The city council is already aware of these statements. Please consider Judge O'Connor's comments regarding Mark Howell. His disposition throughout the hearing, these same mannerisms are a direct reason why the city employees decided to form a union in 2011, less than six months after Mr. Howell was hired as city manager. Page 10 of Judge O'Connor's fact-finding. "In the February 19, 2013 meeting, How expressed prohibited the union generally and the union steward Bracken specifically from approaching the city council with his concerns. Aside from obvious First Amendment implications that any sixth grader should be able to spot, How ordered was a per se unlawful restriction of protective activity. While public employees' unions are obligated to bargain with employees' chosen representative, petitioning the government, lobbying, and engaging in appropriate speech during public comments, portions of public meetings is a right of all Americans. Even including public employees who belong to unions. Labor relations in the public sector frequently and appropriately include the publicizations of viewing by the parties on both sides and a dispute. After all, what is the ultimate at stake is the question of what services will be provided and how public monies will be spent. Both contents was imposing prior restrictions to the First Amendment and para-protective activity. How sought to punish the employees for engaging in other forms of communications, which he had not sought to ban initially. How complained bitterly at the stand about the fact that the supporters of the union had placed objective, inoffensive yard signs in the city. He singled out the criticisms of the fact the union had expressed its views in the newspaper's advertisement, which How deemed to be bargaining and bad faith. He openly targeted Phillips for having apparently signed onto the newspaper's ad. With How's venom towards Phillips was apparent in his own accord raising the issue from the witness." Page 11. I'm sorry. I only have five minutes, right? Page 5 and 6. "To the extent of the difference in their description of the meeting and comments made there, I credit Bracken, as How was generally was not credible." This is just my own side note. This is somebody that the city of Lowell has hired to represent themselves. Keep that in mind. That is my own personal opinion, but that is something that everybody should understand when you hire a public employee. They represent you, and this man was specifically hired with his educational background to represent the city. "Based on part of his own demeanor and frankly his smugness, in testifying about that exchange, I find How raised the $1,000 bonus given to all employees with Bracken as a deliberate provocation. How sought by raising the issue to affirm his own authority by underscoring his personal ability to dole out an unscheduled bonus to those he favored without city council approval." Without city council approval. Does that make anybody question anything? And with whole bonuses from those disfavored employees. Further, How sought to single out the union members that they would gain nothing from joining the union, and that in fact they would lose out on benefits given to all... Let me say that again. They would lose out on benefits given to all other city employees.
Your five minutes are up.
Okay. I would like to finish my last sentence, if you don't mind.
Last sentence.
Or my last paragraph. If you don't mind, I'll have my sixth grader finish it for me. Since he stated the sixth grader could do this.
Finish up.
Okay, thank you. "How's antipathy of the utilization of the IVW unit was transparent, both in his actions and his demeanor while testifying. At the table, How insisted that any contract would have to include the IVW's members being employed at will. That the city received the right to replace the full-time IVW members with non-bargaining units, part-timers. And the city reserved the right to self-contract all IVW workers. In his testimony, How refused to be constrained in the efforts and the city council to limit his extraneous comments."
Thank you. Anyone else here to address the council this evening?
Peggy Covert, 982 North Washington. I'd just like to request, I think it was about a month ago that I brought up to Mayor Hodges and to Mr. Howell, that there's a light out in the parking lot, in our main parking lot out there. And it scares me to park out there when it's that dark, and so I'd just like to request again that that, it's the parking lot, right out that way, that that light be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comments and move on to whole business. District goals report as well as pending council projects. Mr. Howell?
Nothing new on either one.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item seven. We have several items here. The striking of delinquent taxes.
I've provided you an explanation of three personal properties I'd like to strike from the rules. They're from 2009. I'll be asking permission from all the other tax and jurisdictions as well, and the amount I am striking for the city is $617.
Offense considered, that's too bad.
Uh-uh. I'm sure you did due diligence and tried to recover those. I move that we strike the delinquent taxes for the property tax rolls that were listed in our packet.
I will say.
And moved and seconded to strike the taxes as presented to us, and for this roll call, please.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent. And Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on to item B, adoption of mixed-use ordinances.
And there are two ordinances here. The planning commission has spent several months developing language for mixed-use district. Mixed use allows for a combination of residential and commercial uses in areas where there's already a transition between commercial uses such as the downtown and residential uses such as neighborhoods. In addition to developing the language, the planning commission has identified an area to be rezoned to the newly designated mixed-use district, and those areas identified in the master plan are converted to this type of use. In keeping with the deliberate approach the planning commission has taken, I brought this issue to you a couple of meetings ago and showed you proposed... this issue to you a couple of meetings ago and showed you proposed changes. If you had any questions, did not get any feedback, and so we're ready with the ordinances and they're before you for official consideration. Again, there's two ordinances. One, you would have to adapt them separately. One adopts the language for the mixed-use district and the second rezones the properties.
Any questions or concerns? Is there a motion for the first ordinance? That would be 1501.
I'll make a motion for the first one.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt the language, ordinance 1501. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Isanson and Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Thank you. The second part deals with the specific properties.
I will move for approval of the ordinance 1502.
I will second.
It moved in second to adopt the ordinance 1502. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Isanson and Mayor Hodges.
Yes. Thank you. As of item C, the 2015 street project discussion.
And there was a memo attached to your packet and Dave Austin is here. Dave, if you want to step up and do the heavy lifting on this. Basically, what we want to talk with you about is a proposed street project for this year. And we also want to talk about the merits of edge milling versus overlay. And that's where Dave comes in.
Hey, good evening. The streets we're talking about tonight, right outside on Monroe and then going east to west on Avery, and then the perpendicular streets, Washington, Jefferson, and Jackson. And we are looking at two types of treatments. Well, first of all, each of these streets has been in since at least the 70s. And there are photographs in your packets that were taken this fall and you can see the condition of the street. They're broken up in a lot of areas, particularly in Monroe. We know as we pull in to go to city council meetings or to the library, we've got a lot of patches on this particular street. Same way on Avery and the other streets. So we're looking at two types of treatments for this. The first type of treatment is called an edge mill in overlay. And on an edge mill, what you would do is you would come up to the gutter pan or that flat concrete portion that's next to the curb, and you would mill that out about eight feet. Now typically, these streets vary in width, but they're between 27 and 33 feet wide. And on an edge mill, you're milling eight feet from the edge of the gutter in each side. So that's 16 feet, and you're leaving the center pavement as is. And then the idea is that you would fill, when you go to put your overlay on, you're not covering that gutter because you've milled that out. So you would fill that in and then you would cover the asphalt that exists in the center. The trouble with that process is if the center portion of the street that you haven't milled is in poor condition, you still need to go in and patch those deficiencies before you overlay or else they're going to reflect back. So while there's a cost savings because you're minimizing the amount of milling that you're doing, unless your street is structurally sound across the whole cross-section, you could potentially have reflective cracking in the center. Certainly Monroe is a good example of that. You probably don't even need pictures to see that. So while we could edge mill Monroe, we would also have a substantial amount of removal of failed asphalt in the center to get it to a point where we could even overlay it. But on the, in the report, on the fifth page, I give cost estimates for that. And the sum of that, if we use that process on each of the streets is about $232,000. That includes the edge milling and overlay of two inches of asphalt over the whole cross-section, fixing of driveways that need it, and also the replacement of curb that has failed periodically. Alternatively, we could look at a full pavement removal and resurface. And this is very similar or exactly the same process that we used on Sibley for the last few projects just last fall. A couple of years ago, we did it on West and Pleasant. And in this process, we remove all of the asphalt between the gutters and replace it with new asphalt. Now in both these situations, the reason we're able to do this mill and resurface is that we believe, because of our experience in the city of Lowell, that the base material is okay. So unlike some of our larger projects that we've had MDOT funding on, on Bowes Road or on Foreman and G, in those cases, sometimes the base material wasn't good. So we went down and we took away the gravel and we put in new sand, new gravel and new asphalt. We built that whole sandwich up. In this case, the underlying material we believe to be okay. We have a lot of good granular materials in our river basin community. So that allows us to do these overlay projects. In the second example, however, we're getting rid of all of that bad asphalt from the edge all the way through the center and replacing now with three inches of asphalt. So as you can see, it's going to cost more money and in the tables that I gave you, it's an extra $100,000 for this project. The difference is that your extended life that we predict before you're going to see cracking, in the first example, was about five to seven years. In the second example, it's more 15 to 20-year range. So if you look at it on an annual cost basis, the second alternative is more cost-effective over time, but it's more intensive upfront. So that's, those are the options that you're actually. Any questions?
The importance here is to give some direction towards one method or the other.
Yeah, I think so. And I, you know, we wanted to have a discussion with you about the difference between the edge mill and full pavement removal. And I think that for this section, that we would be heading toward the full removal, mostly because these streets get a lot of traffic. Where we did this over on Chatham, there's some truck traffic there, but the volumes just are not as high as they are here. And I think as we started moving forward with a long-term street plan, I think we'll have a lot of discussion about this edge mill versus full pavement removal. And we'll have to sort of use our, the best knowledge that we have in terms of the traffic on those. And we may have to, you know, you can see the difference in costs. We may have to do some edge milling to get some streets done and to get ahead of the system and to get on track with the program. But there's some areas where it's just because of, again, like I said, because of the traffic, because of the volume, and because of the weight, we should look at that full pavement removal. So what I'd like, what I wanted to get out of tonight is I'd like to start proceeding with this as our street project for this year. We have about $200,000 already, part of it from the LCTV that you approved and then the one mill, $100,000 that we set aside for streets every year. My plan would be to go to the DEA and talk with them because this project is still in the DEA and see if they're willing to fund the difference or a portion of the difference and then go from there. But I'd like to see us do this project and the other thing is coordinate it with MDOT. MDOT has told us that they're looking at doing a milling resurface of M21 from Valley Vista all the way to the county line. And they plan on letting bids for that in June. That's going to be probably a late summer, fall construction project. We would certainly, if we move forward on this, we'd coordinate with them and might even, might even see some advantage there in the bid process if someone's going to get an early one in the bid for M21. We may see some cost savings there as well. Can't ever guarantee. Anyway, there's a lot of planning that goes into it. I'd like to move forward with this as a project this year.
Question. On Monroe Street, weren't we going to do some water and sewage work on Monroe?
Yes, farther up Monroe, we have to go back and look at the maps, but there's a water line farther up Monroe that needs to be replaced for flow up in that area. And then I think up to King Street, I think there's a water line there that we need to look at replacing as well.
Okay. The other, the other thing that we did, I don't know if we actually promised, but we did have some residents on Donna Street that came in last fall. And I know that everybody wants to do downtown first, but I really think that we should be trying to hit some of the streets that are not near around City Hall because they have all been redone quite a few times more than the other ones that have been done at all. That's just my opinion on that.
And if I may, I was going to talk about Donna at the end of this presentation. We, at your next council meeting, I'm going to ask whether or not you would reallocate the CDG funds that, it'll be the last year that we receive those funds and we want to get them spent in, before June, I think, because that's your goal. We've been working with KIMCO, we're working with HUD to see whether or not we can do an overlay on Donna and new CDG funds for that. I think the total cost is going to be somewhere around $35,000 to $40,000 and the CDG funds are going to be about $25,000 to $30,000. So we'll have to cover some of the difference in that, and I think we can do that. Donna is the worst street in the city. We have the ratings that the Grand Island Metro Council has put together for us and we need that to start to put together a long-term plan. And Donna is at the bottom of the list when it comes to those ratings. And so, again, we've got the availability of CDG dollars and I'll be coming to your March Council meeting to ask whether or not we can allocate those to Donna and then we can do Donna perhaps yet this spring.
Now, the other question is, there's some very, very nice plans for M21 with the DEA. Is this all going to try to be done at the same time or are we going to do this and then tear it back up to do something else?
That's a, that's a very good question. I just don't think that we're going to be able to pull the bump outs and those kinds of things. I don't think we're going to be able to do that within the short timeframe that we have. One of the things that we've talked with MDOT about is as they redo the street and they come back and paint, can they paint those bump outs? Can they paint those lines? And that'll give us at least a visual perspective of what that looks like. It'll help a little bit with traffic. People tend to drive through those lines anyway. I mean, we've got a modded base hardware in some of those areas. But it'll at least give us an idea of what those bump outs would look like. So we're going to ask them that, whether or not they could paint those lines for us. But I think the bump outs, we're talking with the DEA right now and working with them on what their priorities are going to be over the next three to five to 10 years. And once they develop those priorities, then we'll know whether or not that's a project that, you know, they're going to fund and one that's going to be. But I just don't see it being done this year. I don't see it being repeated in the plans. Now, one positive thing though is that as a part of this project, we have received some assurance from MDOT that they could include a little crossing at the Riverwalk and bump outs there as a part of this project. And so we are working with them on that part of it, which is, I know some people have been concerned with the community for years and years and years. And so we're hoping that we can get that accomplished with them.
All right. The other discussion goes back to the full payment.
I think so. I mean, I just can't, you know, maybe Jackson would be a candidate for edge mill, maybe, I don't know, but I, you know.
Looking at the pictures of the streets and he gave us that presentation with all the alligator cracks.
You look at the center, the center's all.
Good waste.
You get, the council gets a good mix here though because, because I'm the guy that wants to spend the least amount of money and he's the guy that wants to tear the whole thing out, build the whole thing, including the base so you can get both extremes. He wants it to last for 30 years and I want to get it done, get something done. And so somewhere in the middle, you can tell us where you'd like us to go and that's the direction that we'll go in.
My feelings is for that, you've got five years of useful life on one, 15 on the other, 10-year difference, $100,000, $10,000 a year. Although we're paying for it now, I think that's a better investment to go with the full payment.
With these streets, yes it is. Now, another thing for you to know is that I've been working with the Metro Council and with MDOT on Monroe and Jefferson and trying to get those on a federal aid eligible ones. And that process is ongoing right now. And as we go through that, our justification is going to be that it's a proper route and it's a, you know, just a major move for traffic serving a, serving an industry up there. As we put together the paperwork, one of the concerns, I want to get that out right now, is that if it's federal aid eligible and we use federal aid money for it, it could put us in a position where we would have to restrict parking on those streets. And if we would have to restrict parking on those streets, if that's going to be the case, my plan is to send letters to all of the property owners along those two streets and just say, is it, is it worth it? Do you, do you want us to try to whack the federal dollars to redo these two streets and get them done at the expense of restricting parking, kind of like Bowes Road, we just went through that process. And if the residents say, no, it's not worth it, then that's not an avenue to pursue. So when the rumors go out about restricting parking on Jefferson and Monroe, we're not going to just go ahead and do it. We're going to consult with people who actually make that. Including you, Mr. Here.
Could I ask whether that's both sides or?
I, I, I think it could be both sides. I don't know. I mean, we've got to, we've got to get.
That's a different story. One side is not too bad, both sides is very bad.
Yeah.
Well, I agree. I think the 15-year is the way to go. And if we can get some support from the DEA, since it is a large project, I think that's, that's the best way to spend the dollars to get the longest life out of the roads. And if we can do Donna too, that's just the best use that we have of our limited funds. I think that's good thinking, good planning, and I like that.
No, I would agree. Other than the fact that the DEA has a lot of requirements or needs, so whatever DEA help we would get, I would hope it would be kept to a minimum, simply because we want to support the downtown business. I want both things.
I agree with Mr. Howell, but supporting the downtown business is giving him a nice road too. So it's part of the DEA's job.
I think you have been such as.
We're going to keep moving forward. I'm going to talk with the DEA. Thank you, Dave, for being here.
Yes, thanks, Dave. Moving on to item D, resolution to ratify collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Howell.
Thank you. We're pleased to announce that we've reached an agreement with the IBW Local 76 for employees of the Target Public Works. The agreement has been ratified and signed by the union and a similar agreement has also been approved by the way of the power. been approved by the way of the power board. This resolution was ready for action at your previous council meeting. We were waiting signature on the agreement to arrive the Monday of your council meeting. There was also, as a part of that resolution, a statement that we would decide not to appeal the decision, just to make it clear that that was our decision. Just to update you on that, the deadline for appealing is, it was today. And the city did not file an appeal and upon verifying that the union has not appealed, then we will post the notice that's required as a part of the order and then we plan to issue a, through a special check run this week on the thousand dollar payment that is due. But in the meantime, you have before you a resolution to ratify and offer rest signatures on the counter.
Any discussion?
I think that we approved the resolution to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Eight-Six.
I will second.
And moved and supported to adopt the resolution three dash fifteen. For this, the roll call.
Councilmember Althoff?
No.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Zappson and Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Asking for a break. Voting on to item D, discussion on the removal of unsafe structures.
I'm gonna pass this on to Steve a little bit. I wrote to you about having a discussion regarding issues related to removal of unsafe structures. I just wanna give some field of counsel on how we're moving forward at all on this issue in general. So Steve, maybe you can talk a little bit about it.
We had a, we had a house fire about a year ago to the day, working with the prosecutor's office. We do have an open criminal case on that and we are still moving forward with that. But in the meantime, we've had this house sitting burned out for a year. It is an unsafe structure. We've been citing the home about one citation per week under city ordinance as an unsafe structure. The bank is saying that they cannot move forward on this. However, we have information that they have paid a company to do the removal of the house, that they have ordered that company not to go forward. And I've asked Bank of America to see if they would send someone to the council meeting tonight. I don't know if there is anybody from Bank of America. It does not appear. So we're looking for direction from the council on what they would like us to do because I've been getting complaints from numerous neighbors that live in that neighborhood. And I do recall a house just north of the city in similar condition that sat for more than a year, but less than four years before they tore it down. So I did talk to our city attorney, Mr. White, about seven dash four-six and the unsafe structures. And I'd like some direction and where you would like us to go with this.
Is the, is the house barricaded so that it can't be accessed?
It is, but because the backside of the house is burned out so badly, you couldn't access it.
The yard's not fenced in or?
The fence was destroyed at the fire as well.
So basically, it isn't secure?
No, it is not. Not to my satisfaction.
Okay. And I would agree with you on that. I think that should have been dealt with a long time ago, you know, making it secure. I know they do have, you know, because it was an arson, it does take extra long.
We can't throw it off?
Yeah, okay, whatever. But there was, you know, I can't say that, but anyways, there is circumstances. So, but first of all, I think we should have pursued making sure that it was safe right off the bat instead of waiting until now and now saying that it's unsafe, you know, that it's unsafe. We should have had it secured first. That's my, that's, just let me, let me go here. I know, I know that it needs to be dealt with, but also there was one, just like you said, north of town that they didn't even make the place secure. I mean, it was pretty bad. I can't see around the back of that, I've never went around there, but it should have been made secure a long time ago. But I do believe that we need to work on making it safe. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
They did put up a temporary fencing, but because of the length of time that it's turned off, it's deteriorated.
Is there, can we give them a time limit? Say if this is not taken care of by this amount of time, is that a possibility to at least give them, don't just go in and take care of it, but say you have thirty days or you have so many days or the city, do you do notification first?
Yes, under one-twenty point three subsection.
Okay, oh, sorry. Yep, I did.
The city council can set a reasonable time limit.
Okay. It seems like they've had enough time, but I don't know what they're doing there. But, you know, we are here to provide for safety of our citizens and if it's unsafe, I would suggest that we give them a time limit and notify them that if it hasn't taken care of by a certain amount of time, that we will make it safe for our citizens.
Is there usually a period?
Not less than ten days, but no more than ninety days is what the time limit says.
I can just go on kind of what I remember that happened on Main Street years ago. And I think the city went out of their way to be cautious and all that kinda stuff. And after the building was torn up, this is a three-story building here on Main Street, the owner then came back and said that the process wasn't right and he was awarded the retail value of a three-story building as far as I remember. So it's a really sketchy. And I think people are more litigious today than they were forty years ago, so proceed with caution. I don't have an answer.
I am. I remember the one that was through, one on Jefferson?
Yes.
And that, how that went quite a long time. Back and forth, it was secure, but it did help. Does anyone remember how long that went up?
It was less than a year, but it was about a year.
It was a long time.
It was a long, yeah, I think it was a little bit more than a long year, I think.
The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is I had contact with the news media because they were trying to pull our house into a story that they were doing at Grand Rapids with similar problems that the city of Grand Rapids has had and some of those vacant houses have been sitting for up to four years. I think they love those, one was from two thousand nine, so quite a long time. And I didn't wanna see another summer in that neighborhood for the neighbors.
I'm pretty concerned for the adjoining neighbors, but, and I did see the report on, I believe it was when, when you drill down far enough, the problem was federal aid assistance or laws or your government isn't at the bottom of that, so the four-year process.
I don't know if Mr. White has any more input than I've given here.
I do. What Chief described is a little bit of catch twenty-two and Councilmember Hall was exactly right because it's a process that you're required to follow. That's outlined in part in what was included in your agenda packet, but the initial issue is you have to make a determination that the cost of the repairs exceeds the assessed value of the property. Once you've done that, then you can start down the road of issuing this notice to repair or demolish within ninety days. And then they have to take care of that or they can appeal that decision to the construction board appeals, that order to do that. And once you get all the way to the end though, this is what becomes important and you're almost obligated if they've done nothing to tear the building down yourself at your cost, the city's cost, and then put it, the cost of that, you're entitled to put as a lien on the property and collect in the same way you collect property taxes. Oftentimes what the problem with that is, by the time you've gone through that process and torn down the building, the value of the property isn't equal to the cost that you put into the property to tear it down. And so now you're in a situation where you're spending city general fund monies to do this that you might never able to recover. And that's fine, you can do that, you certainly have the right to do that if you want to, but you need to be aware if you start down that process, that's where you could end up. Would a bank take you that far? I don't know. We'll see, I guess if you see that way, we'll see. I think it's interesting that Chief has indicated that from his information, they've already hired someone to tear the building down, so maybe just sending that notice might get the process going. The other alternative is to keep writing them for violations and requiring them to the building at least in a safe condition. The problem is there, they sometimes often feel that it's cheaper to pay the fine than to do what it takes to put the building in a safe condition. So it's, you saw the expose on television a couple of nights ago, you can see the problem that communities are having with these companies. Of course, that became accelerated after two thousand and eight with so many forefathers. But that's what I had brought.
All right. Just a question if I may, then what, if the city were to pursue tearing the building down and the bank or whoever owns it just gives up on the property and then sort of tax it, does the city ever recruit that money?
If no one buys the property, you'd never recruit the money. You could probably eventually get the property in tax sale, but whether that has the value that you put into the demolition cost, probably not in most cases unless it were a equally valuable piece of property.
Mr. Rex, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I wanted to bring up a point about the last item, the previous item.
We've looked at, thank you.
I was standing here when you were talking about it.
I didn't recognize that time, thank you. We're finished with that.
Thank you.
Anything else with the discussion on the unsafe structures?
Well, we had this issue on Grove Street as well and we had put up even issuing a citation, we're looking with the property owner. We had said that as long as they were making progress, they were trying to work with the insurance company to get the insurance company to pay, as long as they were making progress, then we were not gonna cite them. So it's almost a case-by-case basis, but I guess I'm kinda looking from you for what you think is a reasonable time period to allow the property to go before we actually cite them and then how quickly will we get from a citation to actually moving toward demolition of the property or putting it into a safe condition? What do you envision as an appropriate period of time, is it thirty days, ninety days, six months, a year?
Did you, did you do any checks with other communities, you know, to see what they're doing?
No, I did not. And the only reason I didn't do that is because we're bound by our ordinance, not by any other city's ordinance.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at, I'm just, you know, just for a, for a comparison to see what other communities are doing because.
We could do that, I can put it all on the list serve. My guess is gonna be, and I will put it on the list serve, my guess is gonna be, you know, even here, it's a kind of case-by-case thing. With other communities, it's probably gonna be a little bit more, but I'll put that question out and see what kind of feedback we get.
Yep, the other thing that I would suggest, if that building isn't safe and secure like it's supposed to be, I think that we should contact them right away and say if they don't make it safe and secure like they're supposed to, we should hire it done and they can pay that.
At least seal it up.
Just at least seal it up. I mean, maybe that would, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that it would, but, you know, it's supposed to be sealed up and safe and it's not, so why don't we just make them follow that? That's a public safety deal, that's not, you know, so is the structure being unsafe, but until there's an architect swimming in there and said that it has to be completely torn down, you know, we don't know. So, but I do think the safety aspect needs to be addressed.
The council, you think it was there?
I like that. Would you get a bid or someone, you would just get an estimate, this is what it would cost to secure it, you could pay this low?
Well, no, just tell them that they have to secure it, that's their job and if they don't do it in so many days, we do it.
Secure for you and bill you.
Yeah, it's like shoveling the sidewalks. Isn't that how that works on the land?
Yeah, I think what I would recommend is that you send them the bill then, if they don't pay it, you know, put it on the actual, try to collect it. See, the issue you have here is once you're aware of a unsafe condition, we as the municipality, that you have some obligation to do something about it. And if you don't, something does happen, some of that responsibility, we could fall back on the city. That's sort of the catch twenty-two we're in.
Well, Matt, and that, and that aspect, I think it should be addressed right away. I think if it's not secure, it's been unsecured for months, so.
If I may, I think the easiest way to secure it would be to repair the sections of fence that were burnt in the fire, because that was above a six or an eight-foot privacy fence, and secure that to what's left of the structure of the house and that would keep the backside of the house from being accessed. And I think even our public works wouldn't be able to do that. And it might be the cheapest and easiest one.
I'm gonna seal on the nodding heads, so this particular case, that's what we'll do. In the meantime, I'll get some more information to other communities. Just also to share with you, I did email the language, and I put the agenda memo to our building court official, just to let him know we're gonna have some discussion tonight. And he said, he responded saying the International Property Maintenance Court, which the city has adopted, addresses unsafe conditions, generally stays at the court official, continues structure and safe based on a list of issues, so that process is in place. There's good guidance for violations, notices, repairs, appeals, those kinds of things. And so we'll follow that. One, a comment that he did make though, that the city attorney mentioned, was that our, and I learned this from another issue that we were dealing with, were that our fines were really low and there wasn't much incentive for people to cooperate because of the fines. So maybe as I was putting the question on the list serve, I'll ask the question about fines as well, maybe we'll take a look at setting those fines a little bit higher, or some change a bit higher. So we'll take a look at that. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, I think we have direction on that. Item eight is monthly reports, they're in the packet. Any questions concerning various departments, monthly reports? Saying that, we'll move on to council comments and Councilmember Althoff.
I have, I wrote it down tonight so that I wouldn't go, go off and maybe insult someone or something. I don't want to, but I do. or something. I don't want to, but I do want to say what I want to say, so here it goes. I'd like to start my council comments with what I believe is our duty is for being a council member. It's simply represent the citizens of the city of Lowell by making decisions on city matters that are brought before us. Those decisions are to be made only after we, the council, have the opportunity to hear all the sides, facts, and after the matter has gone through the appropriate procedure. These procedures are to be public from start to finish, is not our right, but it's privileged bestowed upon us to hold these positions, and we are to serve at a higher level than we would treat our own personal matters. And to go from there, with this in mind, I'd like to speak on a couple of matters that currently face the council. First, I'd like to address one of the letters, letters to the letters editor last week, to the Lowell's Ledger. In this article, a council member made a statement that government was essentially shut down by council member Matt Mayer and me. I can respect a individual's opinion on the matter, but I am a little upset that after a formal lecture by attorney Peter Letzma, which cost the city around fifteen hundred dollars, a city council member decided the best approach was to attack the person, not the subject, and to do it in a local newspaper rather than discussing the subject in the proper form, which is during a council meeting. This approach was not only personal, but in my opinion, very uncivil. So, why didn't this council person participate in a discussion during a council meeting? If voting no on agenda was wrong, well, folks, it's quite simple. We have a council that has been told that it is inappropriate to discuss city matters during council meetings. We are being led to believe the only thing we are supposed to do is cast your vote during council meetings. That is one of the fundamental breakdowns occurring with the council. The whole point of these meetings is to, is so residents can hear us, hear us vote, talk, and yes, debate city affairs. Fellow city council members, discussion and debate is nothing to be afraid of, is what we are here to do. There is also nothing wrong with hearing different opinion on a subject or allowing the public to be involved. Remember that who we are here to serve. One other point about this letter is the statement that the citizens are the real losers when elective officials won't work together. This statement is on spot. We, the council, must work together here in council chambers. When we disagree on a subject or have a difference of opinion, then let's talk about it right here, work it out. Let's not make efforts to ban subject from council meetings or insist that city affairs be only brought up in private meetings out of public view. This mentality is creating a great divide in the city and with the council. This brings me to my main point of council comments. I would like to talk, talk about where I believe this all stems from. A few years ago, the city, for the few years now the city has been guided by one man, who has installed these unhealthy actions into every occurrence within the city. Now I know what you're thinking, I'm attacking the person and not the subject. Well, as an elected vision official, the actions of our city manager is a subject, and a subject that I must address. Under his guidance, our city waged a war against seven of our own workers, which cost us over a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. He made it so bad it drove one of our workers into early retirement, which was not what the worker wanted to do. He was, he has convinced us to not discuss city matters in public. He on many occasions has provided us, to us incorrect interpretations of the law. As a matter of fact, during a recent work session, he boldly stated that it was against charter law for us to speak to our own workers. Well, that interpretation of law along with many others is wrong. He has provided us, the council, with inaccurate information on many subjects. One is the example to me was the depth of the underground buried primary cable. The truth was only known after I dug it up and took pictures of it and provided it to the council. And now it has come to light that he did not, and this is a little bit wrong because I found out later, the deal with the DDA and the special liquor license. My feelings on that were if, and I'm going to get off on this a little bit because I did find this out just today, I know that he didn't have to bring that developmental license up to the DDA, but we as a council appointed the members of the DDA to work for us and give us guidance. And I asked him if he had talked to the bar owners. He told me he had, maybe I misunderstood him, but I talked with the bar owners that, and some of them were here to speak, and he didn't. Well, now they have found out that we didn't have to have the DDA's permission to do that. But the thing, this is the whole thing of the whole deal, is if, if he would have brought it up in DDA and told them what they, he was, what they were doing, so that it was in the minutes of the DDA, the general public would have seen it, they would have known what was going on, and there wouldn't have been a little half hostility. And I do know now that they're going to discuss things a little bit more and are looking into it. So, good for the DDA. He refused, he has refused to provide counsel with him who requested him, look no farther than a report on sidewalks. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to bring it back up again. I know that he's got something on council comments tonight, but I'll never be satisfied with the whole sidewalk thing. And in the last council meeting, our city manager was intending to break, to break council procedure and add an item to the agenda without putting the item on the agenda. This item was approving a collective bargaining contract. Simple proof was that paper you handed to all the council members after the last council meeting, why didn't you include it in the agenda, and why didn't you mention to Mayor Hodges that he was breaking the Open Meeting Act when he did not ask for a motion in a second to take place to adjourn the meeting at the last council meeting, even though it was a very short meeting, it was a public meeting, and it was officially called to order. Never mind, don't answer. But how about the lime ponds that we are two years out of compliance, or the unexpected fire truck purchase put on the city budget in the red? Now let me move on to the really bad stuff. He has potentially changed his city ordinance in attempt to go after one of our own city workers. That is a violation of charter, and in the name of the city is incorrectly and untruthfully testified in court of law. Some people call that perjury, and that's a violation of state law. He violated the United States Constitution when he refused citizens of this country to talk to public officials. That's a violation of federal law. And for the worst, while on the stand in the court of law representing the city of Lowell against his own legal counsel's advice, Howell made it clear he was outraged that city residents voiced their opinions about his performance or his stance on city matters in council meetings or in the local paper. Really, you were outraged that citizens, that residents voiced their opinions about what you do. Who are you representing, Mr. Howell? Because from your testimony, it definitely isn't the residents of Lowell. This is a few, a few, this is only a few examples of poor, unethical, unlawful, and just plain bad actions of our city manager. I could go on and on, but for the sake of time, I will sum it up. I know that Tony Ellison thought he heard what I said, and that he heard it wrong. What I said was, we need to give him take a little bit, and he didn't hear that part. We were all, and actually, that last meeting, that wasn't planned to stall that meeting. We didn't even think about that. We were all, we all sat here in a little bit of awe. But just as the city of building did, I would like to make a motion to read Mark Howell from the position of city manager effectively, and if any other council member would second this motion, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Howell?
Planning Commission meeting was canceled, and it's in the enabling act of the Michigan Planning Act that it's only mandatory that we have four meetings per year. It used to be that we had to have twelve. The law has changed, and when we don't have to have a meeting, then we don't have to spend money to have a meeting. So, that's a good thing. I'm here. In regards to the Trail Route, the final recommendations were submitted to the board. Those recommendations have been approved and forwarded to the state of Michigan for the big decision on what we're going to get approved and what it's funded. It's in the works, coming to you probably in nineteen, or twenty seventeen. So, it's being worked on. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Phil?
Yes, the Arbor Board did meet. We are actually working on a comprehensive tree plan that we will be submitting. Don't have a lot of funds right now. We are, hopefully we'll be getting some grant funds and be able to do some, some projects. But as of right now, we're kind of waiting for some funding, and we're still working on a plan to hopefully work on, if we get some money for it. LCTV did not meet, and the downtown historic district commission has not met yet. I do have a few other comments, and I just want to comment on the work sessions that we've had. My husband did attend the work session. When he got home, he said, is that what work sessions are always like? And I thought about it, and that's not what work sessions have always been like. We used to discuss issues and how to move forward and projects and things that we can do. Lately, we've just been discussing how to get along and who said what, and, you know, picking out pieces of the charter to suit our own purposes. We need to move forward and work as a group. That was, that is what we're supposed to do, just like it's a democracy. There are five people, we each have a vote, everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but we act as a body. When the body decides what is going to be done, then it's done as a group. Whether or not you agree with it or don't agree with it, you each have a vote. So, that's the recommendation at our council session, and I, work session, and I would like to think that we can at least move forward. We don't always have to agree on everything, but when the council decides something, then, then it moves forward. Also, just to clear up, I mean, it was interesting to hear the Merck decision again, although I've read it many, many times, and how we spent money fighting our employees. And actually, we represented the citizens of Lowell. They've got an attorney, we had to have an attorney. It would be negligent to go into a courtroom with their attorneys and not have one. So unfortunately, the citizens of Lowell, the city of Lowell, had to defend themselves against the action taken, and rightfully, they have that right to do that. But we didn't start a fight, we did have to defend ourselves, we had to, you know, have negotiations, and we needed an attorney. So unfortunately, we did have to spend money that way. It wasn't like we started a fight and we hired an attorney. We had to have one to defend citizens' taxpayers' dollars. Also, when we had a coffee with council, I had a citizen come in and ask why Mark Howell was still here, because he broke laws. And I think it's a little confusing. People are reading things in the paper, hearing things about what Mark did or didn't do, and what laws he did or didn't break. And if it's art with the mayor, I'd like to have the attorney explain the Michigan Employment Relation Commission, so maybe we can understand how this works and, you know, what laws, you know, it's not a criminal law. So, would that be possible?
Sure. Be happy to. I think, as most of you know, I'm not a labor lawyer, but I'm a municipal lawyer and have been a municipal lawyer for almost forty years now. So I can have some appreciation for this. Let me just begin by, by saying that it may be important to understand what the Michigan Employment Relations Commission is, and I just happened to pull this up from the website, so anyone can go on the website. And it's fairly short, but let me just read it to you. It says, "The Michigan Employment Relations Commission resolves labor disputes involving public and private sector employees by appointing mediators, arbitrators, and fact finders, conducting union representation elections, determining appropriate bargaining units, and adjudicating unfair labor practices." It is not a court of laws, I've heard here today, more than once. It is an administrative body. It exists in the executive branch of government, as opposed to the judicial branch of government. It is not a criminal offense, it is not a civil violation to be found in violation of an unfair labor practice or determination of an unfair labor practice. I happened to look, and anyone can look yourself, on the website, there were sixty-seven of these kinds of matters that were brought before and worked last year. Some of them were in favor of the employer, and others of those were in favor of the employee. So it is not an unusual process, and it is a process unfortunately that you get involved in when you have a situation where you have employers and employees who are negotiating a labor contract back and forth. The other thing that I would suspect, and I wasn't involved in this process, but as council member Ellison just mentioned, it is the city that is representing, and it's your council and your city manager that is representing the city in these matters in negotiations with the employees. And while I wasn't there during all of your discussions, I did know that you had over the period a number of closed sessions, and I would suggest that probably you as a council gave direction along the way during negotiations and in the process that was followed in negotiations, which unfortunately or fortunately sometimes results in one party or the other party being unsatisfied and filing an unfair labor practice. The other thing that I want to mention is that the whole issue of personal contracts, which has been referred to me to answer, and I will answer that in good time, is a matter that Merck did not decide, that the administrative law judge did not decide. In fact, they specifically said they did not have jurisdiction in that matter. And so I've been asked to look into that matter, and I will respond to that in good time when I've had an opportunity to do my due diligence. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to get that on the record because it's been confusing, and it's been confusing to everyone. So I think it helps explain, you know, why you're not in jail, because it's not the case. And on another note, I would like to say, I'm glad we've reached a contract, I'm glad we've agreed. I mean, not everybody's happy about it, but it's been reached, it's been ratified. I'd like to just keep moving on. There are so many good projects we need to be working in the city. We don't have to rehash this time after time. Let's please move forward in a civil manner.
All right, the Light and Power Board met last week. The biodigester is starting to work and is creating some electricity. It's still in its test phase and it was commented that it's probably just as well, although it's taken a while, but this happens during the winter, when windows are closed. But so far, very little, if any, odor, and I think you could notice that by just walking around the area there. But things are, things are going well, it's on schedule. The pipeline has been completed between the biodigester, Chadley Farms, Kristoff's, Lighthouse, all those things that we know it as. But things, things are going quite well there. The Chamber of Commerce met last week and established their goals with their board of directors for the calendar year fifteen and sixteen as they move forward. Of course, their next great extravaganza is the expo the fourth Saturday of March. We're looking forward to that and Memorial Fund will meet again in May. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. We will have a new director of public works beginning in mid-March. The position has been offered and accepted by, too, is accepted by Mr. Charles Sunland of Carroll. Mr. Sunland comes with twenty-five years of experience in public works, with most of that time serving as director in Carroll. We plan to have him onboard in March so that he can spend a couple of months working with retiring director, Davis Sheridan. The downtown planning plan was presented to the Downtown Development Authority as February twelfth meeting. In addition, the DDA has started the process of updating its development plan by identifying long-term priorities, I talked about that a little bit earlier. With the new year, we're starting to receive a number of zoning inquiries relating to development projects in the communities. A good sign, the economy is recovering and good news for the quality of life of the residents. I spent some time a few weeks ago reviewing the sidewalk replacement program, prior action taken by the council regarding sidewalks, current ordinances and policies in place and our criteria that we use for sidewalk replacement. I hope to pull that together and organize it in such a way that I can come back to you and we can have a discussion about policies and we can have a discussion about that criteria to have something that we want as a stonehouse. And then just a reminder, per your request, I'll be giving you an overview of city finances at your workshop Monday, this coming Monday. If you have specific questions or parts of the budget that you would like me to cover, please let me know by the end of the week so that I can be prepared to do that for you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Appointments, we still have a open position on the Board of Review as an alternate position and we still have one vacancy on the Construction Board of Appeals, so if you'd like to serve your capacity in those capacities, let the clerk know or myself. You know, with that.
I move that we adjourn at, oh, it's separately that late, eight thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty.
One second. I move that second to adjourn, volunteer?
Yes.
Thank you.